It's wild to stream.
You had four minutes.
Yeah, but I didn't.
So it'll be just a little delay. We're just getting our computer system rebooted or going forward. So just one moment, please.
Ready.
Okay. So we'll start over. I'd like to call the order. The City of Oconomowoc Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us. I think it's appropriate today, 80 years ago, Pearl Harbor was bombed. And I'd like to have us all just take a moment of silence for those that put their lives at risk and the families and all of those that eventually turned to do things in World War II. So if we just take a moment of silence, please, to honor those in honor of Pearl Harbor. Thank you. I'd like to move on to approval of meeting minutes for November 16th, 2021. Oh, excuse me. Call roll, please. Thank you, John.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rozick.
Here.
Alderman Zappel.
Here.
Great. Now to approval of minutes, November 16th, 2021.
So moved.
Second, Ellis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we'll move on to any comments and suggestions. We're going to start off with the proclamation of congratulating the Oconomowoc Girls Varsity Volleyball Team for becoming the 2021 state champions. So let's start things out with a nice round of applause. So it is my honor on behalf of the City of Oconomowoc, our council, to read this proclamation for all of you. Proclamation is something special that the city does for unique things that happen within our community. And winning the state basketball, excuse me, volleyball championship was really something special. So I will read the proclamation to you. Whereas, the Oconomowoc High School Girls Varsity Volleyball Team consists of 15 players. Coach Michelle Bruss and assistant coaches Caitlin Kraus and Kalen Schmidt. And whereas, the Oconomowoc High School Girls Volleyball, Varsity Volleyball Team has been working hard all season, loves being on the court and playing with and for each other. And whereas, the OHS Girls Varsity Volleyball Team had a turning point in their season at the Adidas Charger Tournament in September, when they played against the best in the state and won every match in two sets. That's pretty incredible. And whereas, the OHS Girls Varsity Volleyball Team realized after this tournament that their goal of a state championship was in their control and continued to work towards their goal with each practice, continuing to improve their skills and strengthening their relationships. And whereas, the OHS Girls Varsity Volleyball Team has scored 30, a record 33 wins and only five losses. And at the end of their regular season, they had beat Slinger for the regional championship, Hartford in the sectional semifinals, and Manitowoc Lincoln in the sectional final to get to state. And whereas, on Saturday, September 6th, 2021, the OHS Girls Varsity Volleyball Team played Appleton North and beat them, listen to this, three straight sets, 25-18, 26-24, and 25-21, to become the first WIAA Division One State Volleyball Champion in our school's history. Now, therefore, be it heard and resolved, I, Robert P. Magnus, along with the council of the City of Oconomowoc, congratulate the entire OHS Girls Varsity Volleyball Team and Coach Bruss, Kraus, and Schmidt on their championship season and their outstanding, I'm going to say it again, their outstanding representation of Oconomowoc at these competitions. So it's my pleasure to present them with this award and to give them a special round of applause. And they are all tall. You know, I just want to also thank our superintendent, interim superintendent, for joining us, as well as the school board president and all of you here in Oconomowoc. And what a great thing of what we've done here to support not just the City of Oconomowoc, but the greater Oconomowoc and the school district. So hats off to all of you. And you guys look like you had a lot of fun in the parade, so that's great, too. And so we expect another one next year?
Oh, okay. Let's go.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great job. Congratulations.
So I'd like to move forward with a motion for, without, or a motion without objection to move item nine, the mayoral appointments forward to this location in the city agenda. Do I have any objections from council?
So moves, Zappel.
Second, Mulder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have two mayoral appointments to bring to council today for their consideration. First is Mr. Mark Fry. And you want me to do Bruce first?
No.
Okay.
I got to stay. He can leave.
So we'd like to start off with Mr. Bruce White to the Park and Rec Board. Mr. White, would you please come up to the podium? Bruce has been involved in our community for a long time, in and out of different committees and structures, and we really value his input and support and are excited to bring him back on to the Park, Rec, and Forestry Board. I'd like to entertain any questions that council may have for Mr. White. They've all seen your wonderful resume, so thank you. Alderman Rozick.
Yeah, I really appreciate you coming in. I think I've served on the board with you a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I think it was about two years ago.
You've had great viewpoints, some great ideas on the board. I appreciate having you on there. I'm glad you provided us a resume, and I really appreciate that you came in here, whether we had any questions or not, just to show up and say, hey, thanks for the appointment and the confirmation. I will also take this opportunity to ask our city administrator, soon-to-be city administrator, that this, we need to fix our application process so that we have a good, strong online application to help get more people like Bruce involved, to make it easy, that they can go and do a fillable form, submit a resume, and boom, it's into the system. So thanks, Bruce, for your coming out. I appreciate you coming out. I have no questions otherwise, though. Thanks.
All right, very good.
The Park and Rec Board has a lot of things going on. They've been busy and you're doing some neat things with some forward-thinking things, working with Mr. Hepner, so thank you for your service. I'd like to call roll, please.
There hasn't been a motion, Mayor.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moves, Zappel.
Mulder, second.
Any further discussion or questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Welcome aboard, and thank you for coming back.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Our next appointment is for the city administrator. It's a very important role here in the city. And I'm pleased to present Mr. Mark Fry, who's had over 31 years of experience here in Oconomowoc and multiple components of the city. We're very fortunate to have a person of his caliber to become our city administrator, and I present him to council for your questions and discussion and hopeful approval. Mr. Fry, do you have any comments before we open it up for the questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the appointment, Mayor, and all the aldermen that I've had discussions with over the last couple of weeks as part of this process, and the department heads that participated in it also.
Thank you. Like to open it up to any questions of council? And just for the audience to be aware, the council has had opportunities to meet with Mr. Fry and other candidates over the last couple of weeks, primarily with Mr. Fry just recently. And so if they don't have a lot to say, don't worry. They have done their due diligence, and I'm confident that they'll make a decision that they feel comfortable with. Mr. Zappel.
I will be in support of the appointment of Mr. Fry as city administrator. Mr. Fry reached out to me immediately after I was elected to the council, providing me with the tour of his facility. Met with him and his staff. Also want to thank Mr. Fry for giving up his personal time to meet with the Cub Scouts of PAC 49 in regards to an advancement loop they're working on in a weird time for the Cub PAC during COVID. It's still, and he came and met with the boys well after his hours where he could be home with his family, grandkids, and spending time. But he came on Tuesday night at 6:30 and spoke with the boys for well over an hour and a half in regards to Thackery Trail and other projects going on in the community. I think Mr. Fry is very committed to our community. As you can see upon his record, the accomplishments he's had, and he's been very well to work with. And he will even take blame in regards to when there's an issue and he realizes he makes a mistake. And I really appreciate that in an individual, when they can own up to their faults. So I'll be voting in support of Mr. Fry for city administrator tonight.
Thank you, John. Alderman Rozick.
Well, Mark, thanks for coming up here. I had a chance to interview Mark along with one of the other top candidates about three, four weeks ago, five weeks ago. We spent a lot of time over a decent dinner, just talking about your background. Mark and I, probably out of everyone on council, we've worked together the longest. I think I'm going on nine years, eight years, something like that. We've had disagreements in the past. We have, you know, had different things that we've worked on together or kind of opposed to each other over the years, but I've always had a lot of respect for you. You've always handled things on an absolute professional manner. I know sometimes I can be tough to deal with. And you've always, you've always, you know, taken that with a grain of salt and moved on and addressed whatever issue I had, or vice versa. And out of the two people we, I interviewed as part of the process, I thought you were heads and shoulders the best. And I will tell you also, I think one of the other reasons I'll be voting for you tonight is you stepped up as the interim when we needed someone. We had a sudden resignation. You stepped up, and you stepped into frankly, a really, really tough time on council. We had, the vote on the dispatch was probably one of the toughest votes, emotionally, politically, you know, changing of services in the city that we've had since I've been on council. And you stepped into that role to manage that, I think, in a very professional manner and kept those meetings and kept those discussions focused on what the issue was and didn't let it veer away. So I really appreciate that. I think you've worked for the city for 25 years?
Thirty-one. Thirty-two at the end of next January.
I didn't read your resume that carefully, obviously. But I know in the years that I've been here as an alderman and the years you've worked here, you're a hard worker, and I expect a lot from you as city administrator. So I look forward to the vote, and I look forward to the, you know, hopefully a few more years serving with you on this.
Thank you, man. Alderman Spiegelberg.
I'll also be in support of Mark, his confirmation tonight. I want to thank you for throwing your hat in the ring, because I know that being a city administrator is not for the faint of heart. Mark went through the same process that any and all of the other 22 candidates that were identified on a national basis by Tony went through. And in the end, his 30-plus years of experience was equal to or exceeded any of the qualifications of any of the other individuals. I think it was also nice for everyone to see him perform in the interim role. We don't always get an opportunity to do that with a candidate, and he hit the ground running with that, and I see no, you know, learning curve as far as that's concerned. I'm confident that Mark's operational experience, along with his technical experience, which will be backed up by a lot of very strong department heads, will serve the city very well for many, many years to come. Thanks again.
You going to tell them about the Darlington connection?
You can do that.
Karen grew up in Darlington.
High school with Mark's brother.
Yeah.
Very interesting. Mark, would you like to introduce your family? I think that would be nice.
Sure.
Unless they don't want you to.
Well, let's start with the cutest and youngest one. Ms. Bubbly Brielle. She's five. Can you wave? Can you wave? There you go. That's our daughter Tristan. That's Brielle. And then Britaia, our other granddaughter. Stand up once. Come here. No, come here.
She's so cute. Oh, this one, she's.
Oh, volleyball?
Eleven years old, folks. Tall, beautiful, and smart. And she also had to teach me to be her grandfather. She was the first, and I couldn't have had a better teacher. So we have their mom, Tristan. She was their first daughter. Once again, had to train me to be a father. Ran that way. Daughter Abby, you know, two daughters I couldn't be more proud of. I, they're everything to me. Son-in-law Brett, you know, they always say that, you know, a daughter should marry someone like her father. Abby chose to go with someone taller, stronger, and smarter, but other than that. The, I can't look now, because she'll make me cry. The best thing that's ever happened to me in my life is my wife. Thirty-eight years we've been together, and she has supported me and made me the person that stands before you today. So if I mess up in this role, blame her. But no, I, you know, she's my everything. And I'm just so glad that they can be here tonight for this, so.
Thank you and welcome.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss somebody.
All right. Thank you.
Like to entertain any more comments from council or questions? Alderman Kavieski.
I'd also like to thank you for your time in that interview process. I think everybody here on council, based on our committee, the whole meeting, agrees that the city administrator's role is extremely important to the continuity of the electeds and to the operation of the city. Your resume and your performance over the years put you in a position unlike any other that came forward in that interview process. And as is evident in your family, you care for the people that are your fa, that are your family. And I think you consider the community of Oconomowoc part of your family. And that's evident in the work ethic that you've brought over the years. And I look forward to strong communication, transparent information, and good leadership. And you've provided that and more thus far. So I look forward to a continuation of that and a affirmative vote.
Thank you, Luke.
Alderman Mulder.
Like with Alderman Zappel, one of my first days we met, we got together, and I told you to stop calling me Alderman Mulder, because I'm not a formal person, and it made me very uncomfortable. And you insisted that you would not do that. And it's that reverence that you have for the community and for the government here and for the aldermen that impressed me then and impresses me now, that this is not something that you take lightly. Every day you come in, very serious with the best interests of the community at heart. So to elevate your role to that of the city administrator, I'm 100% confident we're going to have that same respect for the community that you've shown throughout your career. So I'm happy to welcome you aboard as our administrator.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder.
At this point, I would be Alderman Ellis.
I called you. You were in your car. What did I say?
Quit talking on the phone when you're driving?
Exactly.
No, in all seriousness. Kevin reached out right away when the position was open and encouraged me to put my name in. He was the first call I got on that.
I need to thank you for your accessibility, for coming to me and explaining to me a lot of the ins and outs that I just didn't know about, that I was ignorant about. You took the time, you took the patience to enlighten me on a lot of things. You never tried to sway my opinion one way or another. You gave me fact. And then I made the judgment upon the facts that you had given me. You did something else that really meant a lot to me. It made me feel like you really cared. And that was you took the time to come to my place of business, sit down with me for however long it would be. And you would not leave until I understood the issue fully. And that means an awful lot. That's a person that I can trust. That's a person that, at the end of the day, I know that is going to be there. So I'm definitely in favor.
Thank you, Kevin.
And I'll make.
Alderman Ellis? No, I used everybody's first name but Matt.
No, I'm Kevin, okay?
I just want to make one comment, Mark, before we go to a motion. One thing that impressed me, because when Mark said he wanted to do this, I said, well, what do you want to try to accomplish? What do you want to try to improve? And the number one thing, and I haven't shared this with the council, but I will share it with you now, his number one goal is to improve communication with the council. And as you saw when I came in as mayor, my number one goal was to get as many facts and as information in your hands so you can make informed decisions when you vote. And so to me, it's just a nice alignment for what I think we can continue to do in working with our department heads. And that was the thing that really impressed me, and I've seen that. I've seen that in your interim position. I've seen how you've tried to keep people informed. And I think the expectations are going to be high for that, Mark. They will be for me. And I do want to make sure that we get that website fixed for Alderman Rozick, so I don't have to hear about it again. So if we can work on that, that would be great. But I'd like to entertain a motion at this time.
So moves, Zappel.
Kavieski, second. Any further comments or questions?
Just want to thank all the department heads and his, the current staff, his current staff at the, Public Works being here tonight. I think that's a testament to his leadership and commitment that he has from his staff to be here tonight.
And I'd echo that. Thank you all for coming. Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Congratulations. So at this point, at this point in time, since we have this agreement, we're going to swear you in right now.
I didn't know there's a swearing.
Because he's the treasurer, too, right?
Correct.
That's why.
You raise your right hand, solemnly swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and faithfully discharge the duties to the office to which you've been appointed, and that is city administrator slash treasurer, affectionately known as Cat, to the best of your ability, so help you God.
I do. Thank you.
I have.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mark. Do you have any closing comments, anything you want to say before we move on?
Yeah, but it won't get me in trouble. But no, honestly, I'm honored with this and look forward to working with the council as we move ahead with the challenges that are going to be in front of us. As I was going through this process and looking back on my career, the one thing I kept coming across was a quote from Vincent Lombardi that said, "The only place where success comes before work is in the dictionary." And I truly believe that. And one of the things when I was meeting with Karen and Matt, I talked about, you know, ten two-letter word phrase that I always use for inspiration. And if it is to be, it is up to me. And that's how I lead things. I got a great family. I'm grounded, so I love being here, folks. Thank you.
It will move on in the agenda to the consent agenda items. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moves, Zappel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got it?
Oops, so you two had it. Thanks. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. All righty. I'm ready.
You're ready? Good. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Good. Let's move on to committee reports. We'll move on to finance. Consider Act on Resolution 21-R2996, Amending Impact Fees and Sewer Availability Charge Fee Amounts for 2022.
So before you tonight is our annual indexing of our impact fees. The city has impact fees for highway and transportation, public safety facility, parks and recreation. These fees are collected for new growth in the city due to new people moving in. The impact fees are for construction in the future. That's the reason why we index them and try to keep our costs contained, you know, for the future. So we use the Construction Cost Index, which is a index that we can look at and have a defensible look at why we make our rates the way that they are. Annual indexing is done by resolution, starting in 2021, earlier this year. Is there any questions about the impact fees as presented?
Like to entertain a motion.
So moves, Ellis.
Second, Zappel.
Any further discussions or questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Under Protection and Welfare, Consider Act on Second Street and Worthington Street Becoming a Four-Way Stop. And I believe we're going to have Mark talk about that, and he stepped out.
So can we have a vote?
No.
This gets on the job and he leaves.
Two ways to stop sign. Jump into that.
Yep.
So I'm going to turn this over to our new city administrator, Mr. Mark Fry.
So the item on the agenda tonight is one that Alderman Ellis had brought up quite a while ago regarding adding stop signs at the Second and Worthington Street intersection. The chief had done a study. We'd both reviewed it and determined that, based on the manual of uniform traffic control devices, that one was not warranted there. Alderman Ellis had asked that that be considered, reconsidered, so we brought it to Protection and Welfare. We discussed it at the meeting, and Protection and Welfare Committee recommended bringing it to council for a full discussion. When I was working on the background memo, Attorney Riffle reviewed it and noted that in the ordinance that we currently have, the powers for deterring signs and placement is dedicated to the chief of police. And so, once again, we'd be here, and both the chief and I still feel that a stop sign is not warranted there. But should the council decide that they have a different thought on that, one of the things you would have to do first is change the ordinance. And I would recommend against that. And I got a lot of respect for Kevin, but I feel that that should be something that's based on facts and the manual of uniform control and knowledge of the city. There's a lot of experience that goes into this. It's not easy telling people no on these signs, but I would hate to get to the point where, you know, the chief. But I would hate to get to the point where, you know, the chief and I, if we've gone through discussion and felt something wasn't warranted, that if all everybody had to do would then be to come to common council and get something placed there. I think it takes away the uniformity of what we've been doing in determining where signs are placed. But that's why the item's on here tonight. It's open for discussion. I'm sure Kevin can more than adequately explain his position as to why he thinks a stop sign should be there, so.
Alderman Ellis. Okay, first off, I don't wanna take the credit for bringing this up. If I recall, Shellpepper at one point in time had mentioned that there should be, we should be looking at it, and that at that point, we chose not to look at it. But I think that was wrong in our, in what we had done. You mentioned a couple of things. First off, you talk about facts and knowledge. As I've stated before, I think we need to be more proactive than we need to be reactive. As our city grows, what I've noticed is I spent a good amount of time at that intersection just counting cars. And on several occasions, there were a plethora of cars that went by me. And this is on off-hours, not just during the usual drive time, which would be six, seven or eight o'clock, or something along those lines. I, too, almost got hit once while I was on Second. And I know for a fact that there have also been some accidents there. Now, granted, you may not think that there is, that it warrants to have a four-way there, but I do, because I live there. And the fact of the matter here is it is very busy. You both have pedestrians there, and you also have cars. Now, you say that at the end of the day, it's all about your facts and knowledge. Then my question to you is, at Thackeray Trail, without any knowledge, without any facts, you're putting a stop sign there where the, on Thackeray Trail because you think there could be potential issues at some point. That, to me, is kinda speaking out of both sides. And so I'm telling, I'm requesting, I'm asking that at this point in time, because the facts are the facts, and that is number one, we have more traffic right now than we've ever had before there at Thackeray, excuse me, at Worthington and Second. We have more pedestrians. We have, the triathlon goes through that area, a block down, but still there. We've got a lot of things happening in that area that this warrants a slowdown. Now, just for giggles, what I did last month was every time I got to Second and Worthington, I stopped. And then I looked both ways, and then I went ahead. The difference between me getting to Concord by just driving through and me getting to Concord by stopping there was less than three seconds. So the argument of, well, you know, they're gonna wanna get there fast, or whatever the case is, is not a valid argument. This is something that needs to happen. This is something that at the end of the day, we'd be taking a proactive stance and saying this is for the safety and the betterment of this community, so that at the end of the day, we did our best to make sure that in the areas of where there could be potential problems, as far as traffic accidents, we did our very best. By moving or stating that they can't park in a specific area does not fix the problem. It's putting a Band-Aid in my, the way I look at it, it's putting a small Band-Aid in a very large gaping hole. And I think at this point, we need to do this.
Alderman Kavieski.
Well, I respect the opinion of Alderman Ellis. I would not look to support the four-way stop sign there. There was an accident at that intersection where a car went into the fence of a resident in District 2, which initiated a request for review. There was action taken as a course of that request that moved cars that were parked along the street away from that corner, allowing better line of sight and vision for the traffic flow there. So there was action taken there. And I'm not currently prepared to support changing an ordinance that I think is effective and the chief's professional analysis of what that four-way stop would be warranted or not warranted for, I fully support. So it's, I would be in favor of some action there if no action was taken, but there was action. I don't believe there's been another incident since. There could be something in the future as it continues to grow. And where I don't disagree with you, Alderman Ellis, is I think we should be looking proactively, which is why I'm glad that there was action taken to increase the line of sight and vision associated with that corner. But I could probably name at least a dozen other intersections that would get four-way stop signs if they become political. So I don't want that to be the case. And if the resident that was looking for the four-way stop sign, who happens to be a resident of District 2, would, you know, engage us or me as their representative in that district, or you as a representative of council in the city, I think the appropriate answer that I would give her is that there was action taken and that as of right now, that's appropriate action for the increased safety of that intersection.
Alderman Douglas.
Yeah, I mean, looking at it, I mean, the average speed of the vehicles is the speed limit. Looking at the study, it doesn't warrant a stop sign. Running quick numbers, I mean, a daily average of 1,650 vehicles going through there, you multiply that by 365, it's about 600,000 cars a year. You're talking an average of one accident per year. We're talking one ten-thousandth of a percent of a possible crash per year at that intersection. Other intersections that way more dangerous and have a lot more accidents in the city than that. You know, honestly, I think putting a stop sign there, you're gonna see an increase in crashes, you know, in the short term, because people aren't used to a stop sign. They're gonna blow it. Other people are gonna be thinking they're gonna stop. Seeing stop signs go up where people drive through there for many years, they don't stop. They don't realize the change. Whether you put flags on the stop signs or you light them, it doesn't matter. So I think almost putting a stop sign there is gonna create a bigger hazard in the short term, in my opinion.
Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, I always try to think back to other past votes on this. I pushed this out of Protection and Welfare because I, just like with the mayor, all-term issues and all that, I think these discussions are great. This is our job to do when people bring these things to us. But I do like to stay consistent in my votes. Eight years ago, when I started as an alderman, they tried to put a roundabout. Mark will remember this. Tried to put a roundabout at Silver Lake and Summit. And the proposition in favor of the roundabout was that we have more accidents there than other intersections. And that, once we actually dug into the studies, it turns out that wasn't the case. The accidents there were just as bad as every other place, so it didn't warrant doing a $800,000 roundabout in that spot. And, you know, based on the numbers, like Alderman Douglas said, the numbers just don't warrant it. There's a few accidents there over the last couple of years. I will also say I'm trying to be consistent, too, with my neighborhood. I've had probably, Mark will know this too, and the chief, I've had maybe a dozen people ask me for stop signs in different parts of my constituency. And typically, what we do is, the chief has brought out a speed sign, we've brought out some, you know, maybe we do some markings on the road or something. But the consistent answer from the city staff from my requests, at least for them to inquire, has been, no, stop signs aren't warranted here. Because if we start putting stop signs at every corner and every intersection, it's gonna cost a lot of money and just slow down traffic. And I've had to fight back against some of my own constituents, saying, "Look, we did the study. People are going, the average speed is actually 23 miles an hour. We don't need a stop sign here." And there hasn't been significant accidents. There hasn't been a death. We're not putting it there. So I appreciate us bringing it up. I think this is our job. We should always look at this stuff. We should always be forward-looking at this stuff, but I agree with the recommendation. Did we put the no parking signs up, chief? Okay. Then, look, I think we've addressed something at that point, and I think that's probably good enough to create that window. The other thing that's interesting is whoever lives in this corner that had the issue, they're not here. What else can we say? I mean, if the people that live right there that think it's important can't show up to the meeting to say, "Hey, put the stop sign in," even one person, I don't think we should waste our time or money on it.
Any other comments from council?
Alderman Spiegelberg. She did, she did show up at one time, and we never know what someone's circumstances are that they can't make it to a meeting. So I don't think we can just, you know, throw that out there.
And I, too, wanna say that. You really can say that. I mean, at the end of the day, maybe something is drastically wrong where she is at this point. So I kinda take a little offense to that.
Well, don't take offense to it. It's a fact.
It's not a fact. She's not here, but there could be a reason.
So we're gonna put a stop sign-
What's the reason why she's not here?
I don't know. All I'm saying is that no one-
Then why would you say something like that?
I haven't even gotten an email or a letter.
She's not in your district.
There's no need to take offense to it. I just told you that I've had multiple requests for stop signs in my district, and I've had to tell dozens of people, "Hey, thank you for your input. Here's the study we did. Here's what we looked at. We decided that's not a good idea." My point is, I didn't receive an email, a letter, and no one's here in person saying, "Hey, we think this is really important." That's just the fact. I don't know why they didn't send an email. I don't know why they're not here. All I know is they aren't. There's no reason to take offense to that. That's just a fact.
Alderman Kavieski.
Just again, a quick final comment, and then I think we should, you know, put it to bed, so to speak. There was action taken at the intersection. And ultimately, I think that resident wanted to see action taken at the intersection. And I had other residents around that area against a four-way stop. I know she was for a four-way stop, but action was taken. And that's important to take away from this. That there was enough to warrant that, where in some cases, there's no, there's nothing to warrant any action. This is what it is. So I think that should set you to ease a little bit that there was action taken and that it was listened to. And I think we need to do whatever we need to do to move forward from this.
Alderman Ellis.
This is not my district. And at the end of the day, it is your district. And I'm gonna follow your lead on this. But I haven't heard anything from Shellpepper, and I'm wondering if-
Well, no, Kevin, I, well, I appreciate that. I'm of the opinion that the ordinance right now gives the chief the authority to make that decision. And I'm not interested in changing that ordinance, 'cause I think it opens up a bag of worms we don't wanna open up, or a can of worms that we don't wanna open up. So just strictly from that point of view, you know, I'm not interested in pushing it any further. And I appreciate the chief looking into it. We did, you know, this traffic study. I think we've, you know, we've taken an honest look at it. A citizen came forward with a concern. The city responded to that concern seriously and didn't turn, you know, look away. We engaged our police chief on it. The city administrator took time on it. And so I feel good with what we have there. And then like Lou said, we have the signs in, the no parking, so. You know, while I'd love to be able to assuage every individual's concerns about every traffic stop, I wish we could do that, but it's just not, it's not how we can run the city. We have to be looking at it from a, you know, an all-encompassing perspective, and I think that's what we're doing here, so. But I appreciate you bringing it forward and continuing, you know, to push it so we can have the conversation here so, and in front of the public, and they can see that that discussion was had. Instead of just an email saying, "Oh, you know, we looked at it, and here's where it's at." So this is done in a very transparent and open manner, and hopefully everyone can see that occur, so.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
And same with Alderman Rozik. We've had some of these situations in District 1, several of them actually, before Alderman Mulder was on board. And Chief Berger and Captain Fister at the time were very good at doing the study, getting out there, explaining to the residents why it didn't warrant a stop sign at that time. I appreciate Kevin bringing this forward, and I think we should always operate in the best interest of the safety of our citizens. So going forward, we should, you know, keep an eye on these things and continue to discuss them and see what is in the best interest of everybody as a whole. So thank you, Kevin.
So at this time, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
What's the motion?
Motion is to Consider Act on Second Street and Worthington Becoming a Street, a Four Way Stop.
In my opinion, you can't act on that. You have no authority to direct a stop sign being placed. You would have to ask the mayor and the administrator to put an agenda item on in the future to amend 7.06, to take that authority away from the police chief and vest that authority in the common council. So that was the purpose of my memo, and so-
There's a reason, there's a reason that ordinance was drafted that way. That was so that every stop sign in the city wouldn't come to Alderman to do what we're doing.
Yeah, every, not every stop sign, every sign that needs to go up would have to come to council. And that's all we would spend our time doing, is debating the merit of a sign.
So I'm not, I'm not hearing from council a consensus that you wanna move this forward? Are you comfortable with that, Alderman Ellis?
Oh, you know, at the end of the day, it's not my district. And I received a call from an individual, and I told him that I would do my very best to look into it. Both Shellpepper and Lou have both stated that they have done their very best. And the fact of the matter here is that something has been done instead of nothing. And I'm okay with that. Okay, I don't take this personally. I'm just following through. Once again, we are all the eyes, ears, and throat of this, of our community. And I was not aware of the fact that you all had, that something had been done, so.
Alderman Zappel.
Stan, would it be appropriate if we just lay this motion over?
No, don't take any action. It's done. It's dead.
All right.
Cool. Next agenda item.
We good?
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to utility. Consider Act on the 2021 Utility Budget Write-Offs. Laurie.
Thank you. Annually, we come before you at the end of the year for the utility write-offs. The city of Economawak is allowed to put delinquent utility accounts for the city and the Village of Summit on the tax roll. So generally, we don't have a lot of write-offs to bring to you. They consist of bankruptcies or people that have moved out of our service area. If you look at the listing that I have, you'll see that those are all electric, 'cause those would be people that don't live in the city and then moved away. So we do send those over to Waukesha County and do collect a few of them throughout the year. But this year, our write-offs are $4,275.87. That's split between the three utilities. The utilities budget a total of $19,000 for write-offs. Generally, we budget a little bit more just in case there's a larger write-off that would happen if it were a larger business or something.
Alderman Rozak.
Real quick question I just thought about. When the monies do come back in, 'cause they typically turn into a tax lien, the monies eventually do filter in, where does that go? Does that go back to offset these for the next year? Or does it just go back into a job?
Yeah, it goes right back to the same account. So it offsets it. Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Rozak, so moved.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski. Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozik.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
On to new business, Consider Act on Resolution 21-R2994, Approving the Lake Country Municipal Court Budget for 2022.
Mr. Mayor, tonight, we have Don Weimer here from the court to be able to speak to these items, so for the next week.
Sounds good. Mr. Weimer?
You didn't put in your name for administrator here. What was up with that?
He swears too much.
I wouldn't wanna make your new administrator look bad.
Oh, okay. I figured.
Plus, I like him. We worked on a budget. We formulated a budget for next year. The good news is, we're projecting a surplus for next year, and we're hoping to end this year with a surplus. The last couple of years, the court has been operating in the red, but we took some action as to reduce one full-time employee. as to reduce one full-time employee and replaced it with part-time, and that eliminated the health and retirement benefits. So, that really pulled us out of the red into the black. So, we're moving under that plan this next coming year. We still have a fund balance of over $300,000 in our account. Some of that's designated. We do wanna look at that and re-designate it for future budget shortfalls. So, there's enough money in the bank, if things go upside down, to keep the court self-sufficient. I'd say for at least 10 more years.
Thank you. Questions from council? Alderman Rozak?
Can we ask questions about the other two motions, too, while we're here, while he's up here? Or do you wanna wait?
Yep, sure.
Hold on this, and then he'll be there for the other items.
Prior to the meeting, thanks for coming, Mr. Weimer. It looks like the changes that you're asking us to adopt are... We didn't get a redline version, so I was a little unclear. It looks like there were statutory site changes only?
Right.
Okay.
In 2019, the legislature rewrote the laws for municipal courts. It was Act 70. It was a lot of law changes. In our 660301 agreement, that the municipalities have to approve for the operation of the court, we needed to pick up some of those changes. And in the ordinance, there's only about three changes that took place on the ordinance. And one of the things was, was that we required a bond of the judge. Well, we have insurance for errors and omissions and stupid acts done by the judge, so we took the requirement of the $5,000 bond out.
Okay.
And that wasn't allowed. And then, the ordinance also had us holding court here, or not here, so we had to correct that. And either the ordinance or the 660301 agreement, we had to bring Town of Sullivan in as a member.
The addition of the member.
Okay. So, there was about seven changes on the successor agreement. And a lot of that was housekeeping. We now have a process for every two years, appointing an administrative chairperson. And now, we have a process for a vice chair. Before, we never had that. We restated where the court's gonna be held. Another important thing was, under the old rules, the judge, the administrative committee could hire the court clerk. State law took that away from us. Now, what's to the judge, as to hiring? So, we cleaned all that stuff up. And during Bill's later years, 'cause he was the chair, we've worked, believe it or not, six months on this to get this up to snuff, and we are. So, now, moving forward, we know where we stand, and everything's solid. So, if we do bring in new members to the court, all they gotta do is pass the ordinance and the successor agreement. But we'll be back again, 'cause all the communities, 20 communities, have to pass the agreement and your new ordinance every time we add a member.
The other question I had was just the fund balance, which you've already addressed. It sounds like you guys are in great financial shape, so thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Any other comments from council?
I'll move to approve Resolu...
One moment, please. Alderman Kavieski?
Thank you for bringing this forward in the way that you did, and cleaning that up, and structuring it so that the court is financially sound moving forward, and it's not something that we have to worry about next year or the year after that. So, I appreciate the vision for that.
What we don't wanna do is go back... We started the court in 88, and the city oversaw the court, the employees, your employees. And we had to pay based on usage of the court. And at that point in time, when we started for his first five, six years, city of Oconomowoc was paying over 50% of the bill for the court. And we've gone to where now, where no community's paying anything. We've paid back all the capital that every community has paid on. We've returned all the capital money from the surplus, and so, it's a good enterprise.
Alderman Rozak?
I'll just... I'll move to approve Resolution 21-R2994, approving Lake Country Municipal Court budget for 2022.
Kavieski, a second. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
On to the item B. Consider act on Resolution 21-R2997, approving the successor agreement for the operation of the Lake Country Municipal Court. Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, as read by the mayor.
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Next on the docket is a change in ordinance. This is the first reading, which may be waived in a motion if you so desire. Consider act on ordinance 21-01025 to repeal and recreate municipal court ordinance 19-0952 to create and establish a municipal court. Like to entertain a motion, please.
Move as read by the mayor, waving second reading.
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
We'll be moving on to staff reports. We'll start with Lori, if you would like to give us an update, please.
Just a quick update. I just wanted you to know that tax bills are going out this week, so people will start getting their bills this week. I know, yay.
I move to strike the tax bills.
I wanted you to know that. So, if you start getting any questions or anything, and then I'll... Just to let you know, the mill rate did go down from last year, the total tax rate. So, with the county and the schools and everybody, the total tax rate this year is $13.86 per thousand. Last year, it was $17.52. So, you know, for the city, the majority of that is because of the revow. But, and then, the lottery credit also went... Lottery credit this year is $226.84. Last year was $156.47.
Ooh.
So, little bonus there. You know, it was there. If people have questions...
People are gambling during COVID, huh?
Yeah. If people have questions about their taxes, please have them call my office.
Any questions for Lori? Thank you. No further staff reports. Any reports or comments from Alderman? Alderman Ellis?
Yeah, this last week, we had had, I think it was the German Christmas, or something along those lines. Yeah. And I had some people come from Waukesha, and they'd actually had never been here before, which I found quite interesting, but they loved it. They loved everything about the city. I just wanted to go ahead and bring that to you guys. You did an outstanding job, those who put it on, and those that have been doing it for years. Continue, continue, continue. The lights on Main Street are just so energetic. They're just beautiful. They really are. Outstanding job. Outstanding. Keep it going.
Alderman Zappel?
There's some news. Not sure if it's public. Okay. All right. So, there's been a lot of good things happening with individuals coming to many council meetings covering us for the Oconomowoc enterprise. Recently got married, and this is his last Oconomowoc Common Council meeting. He has accepted a new position. Very exciting for you, Alex. Thank you for the work you have doing, have done, and covering our community. I wish you best of luck in the future.
Thanks, Alex.
Alderman Kavieski?
To kinda piggyback off Alderman Ellis's comments, in regards to the German Christmas market, the Christmas parade, and all of the joy and hope that this season brings, this community wraps itself around that like no other community. It's really fun to be a part of, and the city looks great. The community is in a better position, mentally, physically, in every way you could think of comparatively to last year. And I'm excited to see it move forward through Christmas. So, it's just really neat to see everybody with smiles and coming together again with greater jubilation. So, it's kinda neat.
Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman Douglas?
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you to those who worked on Thackeray Trail. I was on council at the time that that contentious thing came up. But a lot of people in the subdivision, the residents in the area, are very impressed the way it turned out, and they wanted to say thanks to the DPW and Utility Department. I've seen them out there working, and it looks fantastic, so... Got a lot of good feedback from people.
If it's short, you can...
It's really short. It's really, really short. I was just gonna mention that, too. I think Thackeray Trail looks outstanding. I finally got the nerve to make that right turn and go down there, 'cause I was one of those individuals that was like, why are we doing this? And it looks fantastic. As a matter of fact, I stopped one of the residents, and I said, so, what do you think? And she said that they love the sidewalks, and they just love everything about it. So, I remember how stressed that time was, and I think we all made a good decision and a good choice there. So, thumbs up, guys. Also, before, I know, I got a lot on my mind here. The safety and security of that parade was outstanding, and also of the German Christmas